I call a meeting to order, the time is 7 o'clock. Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conkin.
Present.
Alderman Mozzio.
Present.
Alderman Beedling.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Velco. I entertain a motion to seat a mayor pro temp.
So move. Say your name first.
Who's it gonna be?
Alderman Beedling.
Motion to seat Alderman Beedling.
Mayor Pro Temp.
As mayor pro temp.
Chair Pro Temp.
Chair Pro Temp. Okay.
Hello.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Aye.
Clerk, we need it.
I ask that everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please remove your hats, place your hand over your heart.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, a moment of silent prayer. Thank you. Would Chief Greathouse, you come forward, you have some comments to make?
Thank you. I just want to echo some thoughts that the mayor had told me before he left, that he wanted me to bring up some issues about the beach particularly. Because the summer is fast coming upon us and it's 90-plus degree weather, there's gonna be a lot more people at the beach. So we want to make clear that everyone understands that we want to make it as safe as possible and as comfortable as possible for everyone there. We have a very diverse community, we have a lot of people with different views towards music, towards dress, towards what they deem as fun and appropriate language, things of that sort. The bottom line is, we all know what's appropriate. And I'm counting on the people in the community that's out there, that when they see someone behaving misappropriately, in a way that you know is wrong, that language or drinking, being obnoxious, roughhousing, things of that sort, please call 911. We have officers that are assigned into that area, but we also have officers in the adjacent areas to make sure that if there is a call for service or a need for service, we get down there quickly. We're not going, we're trying to work out so we can get an officer down there during the busier times of when we have more people there. But what's gonna be really important is we have the eyes and the ears of the community to let us know when there's a problem if the officer is not there. That's basically it.
Thank you, chief. It's audience time. Violet Ricker?
Good evening, my name is Violet Ricker, I live at 10 North Sheridan Road. I'm the Executive Director of Waukegan Main Street, our downtown development nonprofit, and I'd just like to give everybody a quick update this evening on what we're working on. To the new aldermen, the report that I've put in front of you is just a real brief summary that I try to present every month to let you know what Main Street has been up to and to keep you apprised of your investment in Waukegan Main Street. So I hope most of you were able to attend the May 14th art walk, we had a really great event and we appreciated those of you who could be there. After talking to the business owners in that neighborhood, particularly on South Genesee Street, we heard from all of them that they did extremely well because they had a lot more potential customers in downtown and they've seen a lot of repeats from those new customers. So, in your packets, from Dave Motley, you have a flyer for the next art walk, which is June 18th. That's also gonna be the grand opening of Lake Surf Designs, we'd encourage you all to come to that. The other thing that I did want to mention is that at the lunch with the mayor on May 16th, Main Street has our annual report finished. So if anybody would like a copy of this, I have some with me, or there's more in the office if you haven't had a chance to look over that yet. The other thing that's in your packets that you'll notice is the courtyard concerts, and there's copies of these outside, if anybody'd like to take one of those. The library just had a ribbon cutting for the new energy-efficient windows that they've installed, so please get over to the library and take a minute to look at that. So, you can check more updates at waukeganmainstreet.org, and if you have any questions about the report, please feel free to let me know. Thanks.
Jamie O'Meara?
Jamie O'Meara, 1318 Chestnut Street. I am here this evening representing a citizens group called Waukegan Residents for City Manager. I've handed out to you just some information that what we're gonna try to do each city council meeting is pass along, something new that we've learned about this form of government. Over the last couple weeks, it's only been a few weeks since a few of us met and started talking about the possibility of changing or adjusting the way we manage our city into this council manager way of governing. We have had hundreds of people contact us and express interest, have questioning us about it, just trying to learn more about it, and that's what we're trying to do. And so as we do that, we're going to hopefully update you as well and keep you in the loop of what we're learning, and hopefully you'll go off on your own and learn more stuff and share it with us as well, because we're really encouraged about this form of governing. Excuse me. So as we read, as we've been reading, one of the things that I was really surprised to learn is that there's actually an Illinois statute that defines the roles of the city manager in the city government. And it's, I don't know how to, I listed it on the form. It says, "The council or board of trustees, as the case may be, shall appoint a municipal manager who shall be the administrative head of the municipal government and who shall be responsible for the efficient administration of all departments. He or she shall be chosen without regard to his political beliefs." We also discovered the group International City County Management Association, which is sort of, it's an international group that oversees and helps train people in this And they're descriptive of the city, I'm sorry, of the council manager form, the elected council, which would be all of you, represents the community to develop the long-range vision for our future. You would establish the policies that affect the overall operation of the community and be responsive to the residents' needs and wishes, which is of course what you do now. The council is the community's legislative and policymaking body, power is centralized in the elected council, which for example approves the budget, determines the tax rate. The council also focuses on the community's goals, major products, projects, excuse me, and such long-term considerations as community growth, land use development, capital improvement, and financing and strategic planning. The council hires the professional manager to implement the administrative responsibilities related to these goals and supervises the manager's performance. So that's what we learned this week in our research, and we hope that that'll help, that these little tidbits will help you understand better what this form of government can do for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second?
Motion, Edie?
Yeah.
Have a voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Resolutions and proclamations? There are none.
I know, there's two.
Oh, we got two?
There's two, that's the old one, sorry. There's two, there's two. Okay. The first resolution is R., is 11R-60, whereas John Delavelli served the city of Waukegan in many capacities with honor and distinction throughout his life, and whereas John Delavelli's years of service were marked by exemplary dedication to the best interests of the city of Waukegan, and whereas John Delavelli's performance in his duties, responsibilities, and working relationships were always characterized by his commitment to get the job done, and whereas John Delavelli was always willing to place his concerns for the public good ahead of his personal interests and has earned him the admiration and high regard of other civic leaders and the affection of a host of city residents. Now therefore be resolved that Mayor Sabanjin and members of the Waukegan Illinois City Council recognize John Delavelli's unfaltering lifetime commitment to the city of Waukegan and do hereby honor his memory by naming Keller Avenue between Belvedere Street and Washington Street honorary John Delavelli Street. Be it further resolved that a suing and boss copy of this resolution signed by the mayor and city clerk be presented to John Delavelli's family dated the 6th day of June 2011. I so move. I'd so move the resolution be approved as presented. Tempest by Rivera?
All in favor?
Aye.
And Ms. Delavelli and family are here, so if you wanna present that to them. Ms. Delavelli?
Let Coach do it. All in Tempest.
Now I know why I came down.
I just would like to thank everybody, all the city council and especially all of you Tempest and Alderman Rivera for bringing this about.
Mrs. Delavelli, and girls, we want to thank you for all the years that you worked there with John and was such a dedicated wife, and I want to thank you for all the years you made those cherry pies and I lost money playing pinochle, I really didn't lose money, I'd lose about 18 cents and get cherry pie and ice cream. I came out ahead every time, but John didn't think so. But we had great times, and what a loyal friend, and what a lovely family.
This is my granddaughter Megan and my daughter Kane and my granddaughter Brittany.
Thank you, but we miss John dearly, we really do.
Also, I'd like to say a few words as well. John Delavelli is a lot of history, no question about it, being the chief during the Sabanjin days back in the 60s. I know John was especially special to the Hispanic community at that time, especially the Puerto Rican community. I know when he worked with Mr. Edwin Montano, and if any, and if any of the Puerto Rican teenagers were out of hand, believe me, John Delavelli would definitely straighten them out and communicate with Mr. Montano. Personally, for me, John Delavelli was like a father to me. I respected him so much, he was important for me during my first time that I ran for alderman, he encouraged me to do so. And again, you know, I love him, this was long overdue, and congratulations. Thank you.
Next resolution is 11R-59, whereas Morris Moore was hired by the city of Waukegan on July 1st, 1952, as a first Afro-American firefighter, and whereas Morris Moore retired from the Waukegan Fire Department on January 1st, 1974, after 20 years of faithful service to his community, and whereas Morris Moore was highly commended for the manner in which he carried out his duties and responsibilities, and whereas Morris Moore, who distinguished himself, brought honor and credit to his family, his friends, and the city of Waukegan. Now therefore be resolved that Mayor Sabanjin and members of the Waukegan Illinois City Council honor the memory of firefighter Morris Moore by naming Lorraine Avenue between Clinton Flora Avenue and Ridgeon Avenue honorary Morris Moore Street. Be it further resolved that a suing and boss copy of this resolution signed by the mayor and city clerk be presented to Morris Moore's family dated the 6th day of June 2011. And the family is here.
I want to say to the whole, I want to say to the whole council, thank you so much, and may God bless you all. My husband Morris Moore enjoyed his work, he loved the fire department, and I ask you all to please continue to pray for us, it's very lonely without him, and he tried to do his best. And we hope all of the firemen, no matter what territory you're in, are blessed and try to save lives because they did. And we thank you all, we thank you, we thank you.
Mrs. Moore? Mrs. Moore? Come back here for a second, please.
I just, I just want you to know that this young lady is 91 years old. She made sure that, she said that she wouldn't talk to us young whippersnappers, is what she told us. So, I also want to take and really thank Mrs. Moore, she's been a top, a top fan of the fire department. Anytime that we had anything, she was right there, and she left me a message on Saturday and says, "I don't know if I can make it, but if I can, I'll be here by hook or by crook." It was my crook, she said. But thank you, and thank you for your husband's 22 years of service, he was a pillar of our community, and we really thank you for that.
And we thank you for appearing here, you were the first Black firefighter on the whole of our show.
I would also like to thank Mr. Quinn from the fire department for bringing it to our attention. I was not aware since when Mr. Moore was on the fire, in the fire department way back in the 50s, I think, I was probably just coming on the scene. So, I want to thank you for bringing it to our attention so we could recognize him, and thank you to Ms. Moore and your family. Thank you.
Judiciary Committee? Alderman May?
The Judiciary Committee met on May 31st at 6:30 PM, and the first item on our agenda, the Judiciary Committee recommends an ISO move to approve the ordinance as presented, amending the towing ordinance.
Any discussion?
I need a second.
Can I, I just wanted to, let me say, I'll second it first, I'll second it.
Okay. Velco, second.
May, I'll call.
I know we have the ordinance in front of us, but could you, the main bullet points of what was discussed for the towing ordinance, was that ever resolved, some of the issues that we had?
As you know, this is my first Judiciary Committee meeting, so I'm not sure that I'll be able to address exactly what, you know what I'm saying, the pertinent discussion items, there was a lot, there was language changes within the ordinance, which gives the police officer more discretion on the tow. What I understand is one of the, yeah, that would be awesome, thank you.
Ask him to explain it, he can explain it.
Yeah, please.
What we did was, we changed from our original seizure ordinance, where before, every time under a violation or under our old seizure ordinance, it was a must tow. That means there was no discretion, that means the car got towed every single time regardless. The new ordinance, six out of the seven provisions, people are allowed to drive away from the scene if they have a good license or somebody's there that can drive away the car. There's only one specific incident where they cannot drive away from the scene is that, and that's if they have a, not a good license and the car's not insured, that is the only time it's a must tow. We did add two new provisions to the ordinance, and we took out two. The two new provisions are, now if you're caught with a weapon in a car, the car may be seized under ordinance, and also if you are cited for fleeing and eluding or aggravated fleeing eluding, your car may be seized also. Going back to the UUW, the unlawful possession of a weapon, also if you're, you know, charged with aggravated discharge of a firearm from a car, that your car also may be seized.
Anything about the fines?
The fines will remain the same.
Have a question?
Yes. Just go ahead.
I just have a question, you just said that if they didn't have a valid license or insurance, then it's a mandatory tow. Why are we allowing somebody with a valid license to drive an uninsured car?
Under state law, our job as the police is to ticket the person for no insurance, and our job is done in that respect. The state law does not require a vehicle to be towed just for having no insurance. If the person has a good driver's license, we ticket them for no insurance, it's a must appear in court, and they have to show that they, show proof that they were insured that day while driving. If not, there's pretty substantial fines that can be applied by the judge for somebody who wasn't insured during that time. We spoke with the state police, we spoke with some other municipalities, we spoke with Ted Kiderko. We do our job, if somebody's driving uninsured, we issue the citation. We've done our job, it's a must appear in court, they need to appear in court and show proof of insurance for that vehicle.
So if he goes out from that stop and hits somebody, there's no liability to the city at all?
No, there's not.
I appreciate all the work that the police department and legal counsel did on this ordinance. I believe, I do believe in discretion, obviously if you hire the right person, they're gonna have some brains and be able to exercise some discretion. But I do not agree with the fact that if you have no insurance, it's not towed, because I know enough people that they may have a license, they may not have insurance, they get pulled over, they drive, they hit somebody, even though it's stiff penalties down the road, they still got that car. And I know most people, they just roll the dice, oh, whatever, I'll just keep going along. So, I'm not gonna be able to support this ordinance without having mandatory insurance, and I talked to Officer Michaels about it, I understand his point, we've had a lot of cases where somebody comes with insurance and we have to refund, I understand that, but just, I gotta pay my insurance every month. I pay that car insurance every month. So I cannot support this without a mandatory tow for no insurance.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, please.
Oh, Alderman Velco.
We, in the committee, Alderman, we went around with this round and round, and I gotta tell you, as a former police officer, I'm right in there with you, you should have insurance. My question was just like Alderman Conkin's at the meeting, was what happens if someone, you give somebody a ticket and then they go and they blow a stop sign and hit a busload of kids. I have a very tough time with that. Here's the problem, and we had to do some weighing here and some weighing here, some scales. Most of the police officers nowadays carry cell phones. Either, if you forget your, if you forget your, let's say your driver's license, you can go into the computer, the police officers can go on the computer, and within two or three minutes, we can see whether or not you have a license. There's no way we can see whether or not you have insurance unless you have that card. There's no central point, there's no clearinghouse, there's no nothing for insurance. So the problem arises is that if it's during business hours and not on a Sunday, Monday through Saturday, the police officer can call dispatch with the information that the driver says he has insurance, they look up the phone number, unless the driver knows the phone number of his insurance agent, and then we verify that they have insurance. A lot of times the officers have their own cell phones, they'll do it on the street without, takes a lot on the air, takes a lot of airtime, especially they want policy numbers, they want everything. Here's the problem with that, if it's after 6 o'clock at night or 2 o'clock in the morning, your mother, my mother, my aunt is coming home at 10 o'clock at night from her bingo at the church. She did not put her license, she did not put her car insurance in her glove box. Now you and I both know she has insurance, but the officer doesn't. In the old ordinance, it said shall tow. Now it's may tow. If my 89-year-old mother, who shouldn't be driving in the first place, but if she's, if she gets stopped and her car's getting towed, and we know she has insurance, the next day she, and especially if it's a Friday night or a Saturday, now she's gonna pay that buck 75 for the tow, and she's gonna pay two or three days' worth of storage fees all for naught. So we had to weigh those, and this is what we came up. It's the best, it's been bannerin' back and forth for two years, and this is what we decided was best for the general public and the police department.
Thank you, Alderman Velco. Any other comments?
Under state statute, without, if it's a no valid driver's license revoked or suspended, and the car is not insured, it is a shall tow, that, where, the vehicle must be towed. So, in that instance, the car will be towed, regardless of who's there with a license or not.
Alderman Rivera?
The discretion is what I'm, that concerns me, because could discretion lead to discrimination?
I don't think so. My understanding what was wrong with the old ordinance was the towing every car, regardless if somebody was there with a license or not. The discretion is, is if someone's pulled over and doesn't have a good license, but they have insurance on the vehicle, and somebody's in their car with a good license, or someone shows up on scene with a good license, the discretion is to let them drive the car away. So, that is the discretion that's being used, if someone has a good license, they're gonna be able to drive that car away. The only time the state mandates a must tow, shall tow, is with, you know, a bad license and no insurance. But when we're talking about the discretion, the discretion is, you gotta have a good license to drive that car away, and if nobody has a good license, or you can't get somebody that has a good license, then your car's gonna be towed and seized.
Mr. Chairman?
Alderman Cunningham?
Mr. Chairman, there's two points I want to make here. One, if I can, remind all of us of the numerous, the numerous lawsuits that has incurred because of this, this ordinance. As best, I think when we first started out here, our intentions were grand, but as we moved forward, it escalated to more problems for this community than any of us could imagine. I think Alderman Figueroa, who's not on here right now, was one of the spearheads of making sure it becomes more of a discretionary, given the...
sure it becomes more of a discretionary, given the, the, I don't want to say the power, but given the discretion to the officers who do the job on a daily basis. We must credit these officers. They know what is what. They know who the bad guys are. They know who's out there trying. We, when we took that away from them, we took all of their understanding of what it takes in order to resolve those issues. And it escalated to us going into more lawsuits and more lawsuits, and it cost this city money. Now, I'm going to speak to you about, from a liability standpoint. It is not the city who is liable if someone hits another someone in their car. It's just not. We're not liable, have never been liable. We did not tell an individual to go and drive the car. We did not tell the individual it was okay to drive a car. Many of you probably understand, there was a case out where the police officer allowed someone to drive a vehicle. Even that case is going to be difficult to prove from a liability standpoint, because the liability falls upon the owner of the vehicle, period. As much as we want everyone to have insurance, and I hope they do, we cannot advocate no one driving throughout this community or any community without having insurance. Believe me, I'm an agent. I wish you would come to me. But the fact is, we must allow the police officers to do what they do best and keep us out of court. That was my ultimate goal as we move forward this process. Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call?
Repeat the motion, Mr. President.
You want me to read it? Sure. The Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the ordinance as presented, amending the towing ordinance, and I so move.
Second by Alderman Valco.
Talco. Alderman Rivera.
I'm going to vote aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conkin?
No.
Alderman Moiseau?
No.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
If I may explain my vote for the record. In the past, many years ago, you could be self-insured. You could be self-insured. If you have enough money in the bank, you could be self-insured. Then we went to the place where the police officers would give you a ticket to appear in court if you did not have insurance. And then we changed that law because so many were without insurance. But the courts handled that before. Why put it in our backs? Let the judge decide what the penalty should be. I think that's, again, officer discretion, I think is important. I'd like to vote the other way, but I can see the dilemma we're in, and we're better off letting the courts decide when we can, and the officer on the scene having all the facts before him. I think it's important. It's a very difficult vote, and I think many of us had different feelings on this tonight, but let's see how this goes for a year or two and see how it's handled. So that's, I think it was a good decision.
Thank you, Lisa, for your work. Alderman May?
Excuse me, Alderman May. Before you read this next part, I'd like to make a comment before you read item B. The item B is to approve the gun dealers' transfer ordinance, and I'd just like to make the comment that there are all kinds of federal regulations and state regulations on the books. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to eliminate the gun ordinances from the City of Waukegan's ordinance book and just follow state and federal regulations.
I'll second that. But I don't know if we had it from the chair yet, if, point of order, before you do that, I believe, was the roll call completed, and did you, the mayor, brotem, decide if it passed or not?
Who was?
Did everybody vote the first?
Oh, yeah.
I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
Yes, pass.
I'm sorry.
Alderman Conkin, if I may. I think the way to proceed is parliamentary-wise is to let Alderman May make the motion, then you make a motion to amend it, along the lines you just said, and then we have it on the table proper.
Alderman May?
Thank you, Alderman May. Make the motion.
Okay. The Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the ordinance as presented, amending the gun transfer ordinance, and I so move.
Second. Second.
Second by who?
I'll second it again.
I'd like to amend that ordinance. Motion to amend to say we eliminate the gun ordinance from the, ordinances from the City of Waukegan and simply follow the state and federal regulations, and that way we'll get this, it won't be a headache for the City of Waukegan anymore and into the future. We can follow state and federal regulations.
And I'll second that, and I'd like to explain why I'm going to second that. Number one, the amount of time we spent legal, back and forth, police department, lawyers, police department, lawyers, gun owner. Why does Waukegan need a special law on the books when all we have to do, quit paying the lawyers all this money to keep working on these gun ordinances and what have you, just follow the state law. Just follow the state law. Get it off the books. It's another thing in the book you gotta read. Just follow the state law. It's absolutely ludicrous. The amount of money we spend on attorneys reviewing our ordinances, want to get $90,000 raises for their work until the Alderman said no on the appropriation ordinance. You know, this is crazy. This is crazy. You don't need it. Get it off the books.
We got a second.
An amendment?
Vote on the amendment.
Amendment.
Vote on the amendment.
Vote on the amendment with the clerk. Please call the roll.
Okay, this is on the amendment. Alderman Rivera?
Aye for the amendment.
Alderman Cunningham?
No.
Alderman Conkin?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseau?
Aye, and I'll explain my vote. I know this is a contentious situation, but I think sometimes it's something, and again, it's something we make that we, who's going to enforce it? How are we going to enforce it? And there's nothing more regulated, at least from what I've looked at, than, than by the state or the federal government than gun, the gun industry. I mean, it's so heavily regulated, why do we need to, why do we need one? I agree with Alderman Tempest, so I vote aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye. Less government is the best government.
Alderman Newsom?
I'm going to vote no because I don't even know what the state statute says for the, for the gun ordinance. What does the state statute say? Are we more confined or more stringent than the state statute, or what? What's the difference between our ordinance and the state statute?
Can anybody answer that?
Alderman Valco?
That's a very good question. Could we have Corporation Counsel come up and then maybe hear the stringent, the stipulations by, is the gun owner?
I think we're short of a roll call, point of order.
We were, thank you.
Point of, point of order, yeah.
Well, my vote is no.
Alderman Tempest?
I vote aye to get rid of it entirely.
Alderman Valco?
Alderman May.
Alderman, sorry, Alderman May?
No.
And Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Now, that just amended.
Yeah, that amends it, so.
Yeah, that amends the motion. Now you got to vote on the amended motion.
Gun for it. I stand corrected.
Point of order, we repeat the amended motion, please, which just passed?
The amended motion was to eliminate the gun ordinance and follow the state and federal laws pertaining to weapons.
So that's what we're voting on now?
No.
No.
I believe it was to eliminate the...
That's what we just voted on.
I believe it was to eliminate the ordinance completely.
The first one was to amend.
The first one was to amend the original motion. Now the vote is on the substance of the amendment.
This is the vote on this one.
Yes, to eliminate.
Now we're voting to eliminate the gun ordinance?
This is to eliminate.
Great.
Okay. Alderman Rivera?
Okay. Repeat the motion again?
The motion is to amend the current ordinance and to eliminate the, to eliminate the current ordinance and follow the state and federal laws pertaining to weapons.
Thank you. I vote aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
I'm going to vote no on that, and I will explain my vote. You know, when we talk about some of these handguns, and I, and I do, I concur with, with the Alderman who is, I'm not a weapons owner. That's just not what I do. I have deferred to many comments from Alderman Conkin. He understands that I don't. What I do know is this, typically, typically, when these gun handguns throughout this country, and particularly in our, in our community, they happen to be in the hands of the wrong people, typically, more so in, in my neighborhoods. And when I see that repeatedly, where I live at, where my children are, where people I have to represent are, then there must be some other form of legislation that we can provide that can mitigate that. I thought this was a very good one, a well compromised one. And again, I understand the sentiment about it, so that's the reason I'm voting no. I have seen the destruction of what handguns have done in my community, and it hasn't been pretty. And until I can see a better way to find out how handguns can get out of the hands of young people particularly, who don't know, don't understand, don't know how to use, then there must be somewhere where legislation can prevent those things. Thank you.
Alderman Conkin?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseau?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
No, for reasons stated before.
Alderman Tempest?
Alderman Tempest, and I repeat, just follow state statute and everything will be fine. Why would Waukegan be the only community making special laws for the citizens when the rest of the citizens of the state of Illinois follows the laws? State law is good enough for me.
Alderman May?
No.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion passes. The present ordinance is repealed.
Just a, a point of order. We had a gun ordinance on the books that was probably unconstitutional. That's the one that's gone. The one we just, we didn't even, this one died. Just, just so we understand that. Correct, Counselor? We had one that, we had one that was on the books that was, that was probably unconstitutional or at least was poor, but it was probably 20 or 30 years. That one's gone. This one never made it. This one died.
Correct.
Just so people understand.
Yes. Waukegan has no regulation on guns as of this moment.
Correct. All right. Thank you.
Point of order, I believe we do, state statute takes care of that.
Well, we don't have an ordinance to, that's what I mean. No city ordinance.
Well, but we have to follow state statute, so the city has a gun ordinance and the state is giving it to us. So why spend all these legal fees, Counselor, and redoing an ordinance when state statute takes care of it?
There hasn't been $1 of legal fees spent this year.
Oh, don't get me started on you. Don't get me started.
Alderman Tempest?
You don't want that fight.
Our third item on the agenda. The Judiciary Committee recommends to have Corporation Counsel draft an ordinance approving the preliminary and final plat of Nina's re-subdivision at 1208-1220 Grand Avenue with conditions outlined by staff, and I so move.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Rivera?
To draft.
To draft.
To draft. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Next item, zoning calendar number 2340, conditional use permit for daycare center. Judiciary Committee recommends to have Corporation Counsel draft an ordinance approving the conditional use permit for a daycare center at 1208-1212 Grand Avenue with conditions outlined by staff, and I so move.
Second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Valco. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Next item, ordinance repealing prohibition. The Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the ordinance as presented, repealing the prohibition of tattoo parlors, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May. We have a second? Second by Alderman Cunningham. All in favor?
Aye.
Voice vote, it's an ordinance.
Will the clerk please?
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conkin?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseau?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
No, because I'm sick and tired of looking at people going around with defaced bodies. I don't see the point in it.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
I have to agree with, I did vote for the tattoo shop on Genesee Street, but I'm really opposed to tattoos. Some young people try to get them. Going to voice my concerns to Alderman Beedling. I vote no.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Finally, we have an ordinance amending groundwater ordinance. Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the ordinance as presented, amending the groundwater ordinance related to the south lakefront groundwater management zone, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May?
Second.
Sam's word.
Second by Alderman Rivera. We have a roll call?
Alderman Rivera?
Could you give us, could you give us the boundaries on that?
Amy Ken, yeah.
Amy's talked about this.
And the north boundary would be?
The north boundary is now Water Street. It was South Street. It's just moving one block up north along Pershing Road to Water Street.
Down to Water Street?
North, north. The east and west and south boundaries are remaining the same that they currently are. It's in the ordinance that it's in front of you. It's, I think it's almost to the city line. I can't remember the name of the street.
All the way down the graveyard?
Yeah.
This means that nobody could ever put a well in there, is that right?
That's correct.
Correct. And it's part of what is necessary in order to get what's called a not...
Diamond Strats.
Well, it's part of what you need to do in order to get what's called an NFR, no further remediation letter from the IEPA. It's required by the IEPA. Until and unless you get that, no development can occur on the land. So that's why we're doing it.
Who asked for this?
Gary Deegan is the environmental engineer on the project. I'm not, I think he represents different people that all are in that area as far as the environmental engineer goes.
Which project is that? Is it our project or is it someone else?
It's the entire area. There's multiple parcels owned by multiple people.
I know what you're talking about. What bothers me sometimes, we have a, I'm going to vote for this, but so the public understands a little better what's going on. I had one lady, happened to be our city engineer, did not want a well put in down below the hill over where your brother lives, Lisa. Didn't want a well down there. That is good water down there. And the excuse was whether there was a gas station there and then maybe some leakage and all that. And you know, well water is better for you than city water in many cases. Yes, yes. And here, a person wanted to do a little landscaping, wanted to use his own water out of his own, we allowed the golf course, Bonnie Brook, to sink wells to pump water. We allow that, but the city statute has control where you can put the wells and so forth. And here, what's happening, they don't want any more wells ever to be there because the environmental danger of the groundwater, which is polluted, and you might suck some of that water up and bye-bye, you know?
Right.
It costs us more to bury you than the lawsuit, you know? So that's why we're doing it. So, okay, so everybody knows why. Thank you.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham? Alderman Conkin?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseau?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
The ordinance passes. Public Safety Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item A is in regards to the police department's membership in the Northeast Illinois Regional Crime Lab in that regard. The Public Safety Committee recommends, and I so move, that the proper city officials be authorized to pay the 2011-2012 annual membership assessment fee and maintenance agreement fee of $111,634.27 to the Northeastern Illinois Regional Crime Lab at 1,000 Butterfield Road, Suite 1009 Vernon Hills, Illinois, 60061.
We have a motion?
So move.
Second?
He makes a motion.
I didn't hear you. Motion by Alderman Conkin? Second?
Second.
By Alderman Rivera? By Alderman Rivera. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
I'd vote aye because it's not a raise from the previous year, it's the same as it was last year.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Item B is in regard to the membership fee of the Northeast Multi-Regional Training The Public Safety recommends, and I so move, that the proper city officials be authorized to pay the 2011-2012 annual membership fee of $11,250 to the Northeast Multi-Regional Training Incorporated at 355 Smoke Tree Plaza, North Aurora, Illinois 60542.
Second.
Second on that.
Motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Tempest. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Motion approved.
I'd like to also, Mr. Chairman, make some comments just for information. The City of Waukegan has received three checks. One is a forfeiture check in the amount of $14,039.74 from the Illinois State Police, an amount of $68,201.23, one check in the amount of $68,251.23 from the U.S. Department of Justice Drug Enforcement Administration, and a $45,000 check from the City of Romeoville for a U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement seizure. I'd also like to, I believe all them checks have been deposited. Chief says yes. Also, there was a great amount of work going into the new recording system in the interview rooms, and the work was done, and I'd like to thank, thank these people in the committee, but I'd like to thank them on the council floor for their hard work. Dave DeBoffer, Frank Lopez, Eric Villa, Lance Johnson, and Dan Bennett. From what I understand, chief, the new recording system in the interview, in the interview rooms is working and it's 100 times better than the old system was. Okay, we're in good shape, so that'll end my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Labor Relations met May 31st at 4:45. First thing on the agenda is Letter A, approve agreement between City of Waukegan and IAFF Local 473, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman Valco. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
I'm going to vote aye, but I also am concerned, two years down the pike, if the economy don't turn around, we're going to be back where we were a few months ago, guys, so keep that in mind.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Thank you. I'd like to congratulate the firemen, or not congratulate, but would thank them for helping us balance the scales on this. This was obviously a very difficult thing, but they stepped up and helped us balance the scales to keep all of their, their men on the city, and that's very important to all of us up here. Item B, approve section 5.6 through 5.9 of the salary ordinance. That pertains to taking it out because it's just redundant from the Family Medical Leave Act. It's a federal law. These things were in there before. We don't need them in anymore. The F, the Medical Leave Act covers all of that, so there's no need for, to have it in there anymore, and I so moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Nu, Newsom. This is a voice vote?
No, roll call.
Roll call.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
I vote aye because the language that was taken out has been taken care of by federal standards.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Item C is approve a sec, approve section 16 of salary ordinance, and I so move.
I'd like to amend that. I think we need, before, I think you need some information on this. Years ago, we had a man in the police department got a doctorate degree on us, a doctorate degree, at city expense, while he was officer, now works across the street. People get master's degrees, not even job-related, on the city at a substantial cost. I want to take my hat off to human resource personnel in wanting to limit the maximum amount of money per year that you can give a student or a city employer you get reimbursed. But I wanted you to underline on page 12 of your document, it says to further qualify for such reimbursement, the course must be administered by an accredited school of continued education, must be specifically job-related, and are part of an undergraduate program. It doesn't say anything about a master's degree or a doctorate degree, and I want that minutes to reflect this, because we, in the past, we paid for masters, we paid for doctorate degree, and some years ago I challenged that and we cut it out. So, and then the other part of the max amount of educational reimbursement, I know that human man says there was no limit before. Well, they want to put it at 5,200. $5,000 more a year per city employer? That's a little high for me. That's a little expensive for me. I'm sorry. Times are tough. You want to go to school? I went to school, I paid for it myself. I got my education, my masters on my own. I paid for it. You know? Help you out a little bit? Fine, but I'd like to amend that to $3,600 a year. And I would so move to amend that, instead of the max amount of educational reimbursement at 5, 5,250 to $3,600 per year, and I would so move. I have a second.
You know, before you second that, I'd like to ask, you know, how many times has this happened? I mean, how many employees have taken advantage of this program a year?
Alderman, we discussed this in the Labor.
I know we did, I know we did. I want the public to know, to hear.
Who's going to give us that, who's here to give us that answer? The mayor, the mayor's the one that gave us the answer in the meeting.
I believe the answer was two currently, Alderman. In that meeting, it was two.
Right. And this is just, this is just for non-union personnel?
Correct.
Union, the union personnel is, that's a collectively bargained agreement, so this, this is just non-union personnel.
And we also, before, it was referred to union too. That's why, gentlemen, you all need to read the contract before, before you vote on them. You need to sit down and read the contract. When the Labor Relations brings you something, you better sit down and read what you're voting on, or you come back to bite you. They'll come back to bite you.
We have, we have a motion with an amendment on it.
But there's no second to the first motion.
Well, the first, Alderman Tempest wants to amend this, he's moved that, is there a second on that? On the amended motion from 52?
My amendment was to make the maximum amount, instead of 5,250 to 3,600, and that's my amendment. If nobody wants a second, fine.
Second.
Oh, thank you.
All right, so then the motion would be to approve section 16 of the salary ordinance as amended, and I will so move that.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo to amend?
To amend. Then we have to vote on the amendment.
Second by Alderman Conken?
No, a point of order. Point of order. I made a motion.
Okay.
To amend it to $3,600. I believe, you made a second, Your Honor, so therefore, we need to vote on the motion as amendment, and vote on the amendment.
And then you vote on the, you vote to amend the ordinance in the way as stated, then you vote on what the substance amended.
Correct.
Would the clerk call the roll?
Okay, Alderman Rivera.
I'm going to vote no.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye to amend.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
No.
Alderman Valco.
No.
Passed. Now on the, now on the amendment.
Amendment passes.
Now on the amendment.
3,600.
3,600.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to vote.
Motion by.
Motion on.
By Moiseo.
Section 16 of salary ordinance as amended.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman Tempest.
Got it.
Would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman Rivera.
Now, is this to add also, what did you say, Alderman Tempest, the doctor, doctor and master?
Just takes the money down to 3,600.
Okay.
Max.
And the doctor's not in it, just his undergraduate in the motion.
Okay, all right. No, I'm going to vote no.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
No.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Passed.
Motion passes.
Item D, approve eliminating section 18.3 of salary ordinance, and I so move. Yes. That has, that has to do with furlough days.
Furlough days. Furlough days.
Furlough days, elimination of furlough days. Again, this is for non-union personnel. Yes.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo.
Newsom.
Second by Alderman Newsom.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I had, I had a question. Now, during our, our economic times, furlough days was one of the main, excuse me, was one of the main ingredients of reducing the budget. It was a key component in reducing the budget. We're negotiating with unions, and we're telling them, nay, no, we don't, because they don't want to give furlough days. Now, I do understand that our non-union staff has weathered the storm. They have been more than accommodating. I guess I'm trying to find a better understanding of why are we eliminating furlough days when it was a key component in dealing with the union personnel to reduce, as a means of reducing the budget, or reducing the negative number of the budget. So if someone can better help me to understand that.
Do you want my opinion, Alderman Cunningham?
Well, I can tell you, I can tell you what was said at the meeting, that the meeting, the mayor basically stated that it, it's just too hard to keep track of, and it didn't work out. It's very difficult to try to keep track of the days, and, and he said it just, it didn't work out.
Okay, well, I, and, you know, don't get me wrong, we have, we have on board now a certified human resource director who come from the private sector, who has over 10 years of experience. That number right there, and you're talking about a person who is responsible for timekeeping for over 22 employees at one point in time. It is a monster. It is a monster to watch when you're talking probably 100 or 200 individuals. But I need to go back to, this was a key component of reducing, you know, the deficit. Now I'm going to get rid of it? How much money is it saving us? Is it not saving us money? Is it in, is it part of the budget? I mean, I, you know, this, and this, this is the first time that I've heard of this. I've never even seen this before. Has this even come up before?
Finance Director, would you care to voice some comments?
To clarify, the language in section 18.3 had an expiration of April 30th, 2011 anyway. So the furlough days were expiring at the end of last fiscal year. Several of the unions that agreed to furlough days, APSME, MAP, I know I'm going to forget someone, IFF has had furloughs before, they were doing so to offset wage increases. So for example, last fiscal year, APSME received two 1.5% pay increases during the year. Those were partially offset with furlough days. MAP received a, I'm not sure, I'm going to say it wrong, I think it was a 3% raise last year, and they took eight furlough days, which partially offset that. Non-union personnel, this will be the third fiscal year with no across-the-board wage increase. 70% of this particular group is topped out in the step plan and has not had any kind of pay increase in three years. So last year, they had 12 furlough days imposed on them. That was the largest number of furlough days of any employee group, and they had that imposed on them with no pay increase, so that was actually a 4.3% pay decrease. So yes, that was part of balancing last year's budget. The current budget that is before you tonight does not have furlough days in it for non-union personnel, nor does it have any wage increase in it for non-union personnel, and cumulatively, the lack of across-the-board wage increases for non-union employees over a three-year basis has had a savings of $400,000 to the city.
Thank you, Madam Finance Director.
Mr. Mayor.
Can I say something?
Please.
To the chairman. To me, furlough days, that's an employee not at work, you know? I think we need our employees, I, there's other ways to cut, I believe. I, I think people could contribute, voluntarily contribute perhaps, a portion out of pocket towards their pension and health insurance packages, as other municipalities have done around the country, specifically San Jose, California, their police and fire, go 20% out of pocket voluntarily. I'm not asking for anybody to take a pay, pay decrease, I think in these hard times, and they're not going to improve anytime soon, to me, that's the best way to solve the problem, and when the economy recovers, if it ever does again, then that, the revenues come in, it could be returned to their paychecks. But I think everybody, everybody has to take a haircut, because this economy is not going to improve, not from anything that I read, I'm not an economist or anything, but I do read a lot, and I think everybody's going to have to chip in. Thank you.
If I may comment on the furlough days. I believe most management have not had a raise, am I correct, in three, three years? No raise in three years. Wait a minute, let's stop a minute. We've cut staff, now we tell them, you haven't had a raise for three years, and also you're gonna take one day off a month with no pay. So, you got no raise, you're taking off twelve days a year with no pay, but I need you really in the workforce. It don't make sense, it doesn't make sense to me, it really doesn't. I can see somewhere in the future, we might have to close City Hall. One day a week, everybody, except for police and fire. The office is closed, Monday through Thursday, sorry. We don't have the money for the payroll. What are you gonna do? Oh, I have a contract? Work on construction, be a carpenter there. The job runs out.
We haven't had a raise in over three years, Alderman Tempest.
I know that.
They took four dollars an hour to shore up our pension fund, it comes out of our own pocket. Taxpayers can't cover that.
Gentlemen, I, and ladies, well, you're all the men, I think of you as a man right along with me here, fighting the battle. You're better looking, but both of you. Gee, I found a rose between, huh, other roses, huh? How blessed I am. No, we need to, we need to look at things very seriously, but to tell a person to argue about no furlough day, we'll pay them, they haven't got a raise for three years. I think this is our way of saying, hey, thank you, come to work, we really need you, we're shorthanded now, but we're gonna pay you. Not a raise, but we're gonna pay you, so I think it's a way, and I see your point, Alderman, I think I clarified it a little bit, or maybe you weren't aware, no raises for three years, gosh. Okay.
All right, call for the question.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Thank you, Tina, for that explanation.
Item D, approve Appendix A of salary ordinance, and I so move.
Second. What is it, Appendix A, what's it say? Somebody have it there? I had it. What's Appendix?
I thought theater coordinator was out there.
This, this just comes more in line with the police department. Alderman Tempest. Again, it's taken out some things that are no longer relevant. It's about the work schedule.
Specifically, clean up the language.
This was reworked by Deputy Chief Wallace, just to come more in line with our current working conditions in the patrol division. Is that correct, Chief Greathouse? Or, or Tina?
Barry had babysitting issues tonight, so I'm subbing in here. This reflects the twelve-hour shift for those commanders that it impacts, and it also reflects the removal of the lieutenants from the language, because they are now covered by the Teamsters Union.
It's just cleaning it up, that's all.
Motion by Moisio, who's second?
Motion by Alderman Moisio, seconded by Alderman Newsome.
Okay, it does, it still gives chief power, doesn't it? Still give the chief's power to change it if we have to.
Yeah, this is non-union, okay.
Not for patrolmen, only, only for his.
This is non-union.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Item F, approve addition of theater coordinator position to salary ordinance schedule. This is a, we have many positions in our salary schedule that are not filled. This was a request to put one in there, this does not mean it would be hired or filled, it is just put in there.
Is it appropriated?
It's a placeholder.
I, I will, Alderman, let me make a motion, and somebody's second, and let's talk about it. I'll, I'll make the motion to get it on the floor.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Moisio, seconded by Alderman Cunningham.
Conken.
Conken, pardon me. Any discussion?
Do you have discussion, Alderman?
Oh, well, I've got a, my question is, I know we talked about that when I was on the theater committee, we talked about it, but if SMG is gonna continue in the management, why do I need one? And that's my point, why do I need one?
Alderman May.
Because we have to, we still have to work out the contract with SMG? It's a placeholder, we're not filling the position?
If the position would come back to the council, I have no.
It will, it has to come back.
Okay, it'll come back, your place on the salary schedule for insurance.
Any other questions?
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
No.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
No.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Next item, item G, approve addition of building and coal compliance manager position to the salary ordinance schedule. This is just a position that we already have, have, we've just renamed, just renamed it.
What is, what is the salary gonna be?
Do you wanna put the motion on the floor first, and then we'll have the discussion?
I'd like to try.
Motion by Alderman Moisio, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Any discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Tempest.
I'd like to know who's in there now, what's, I see it, Lisa just gave it to me.
You know, read this sometimes to us, everybody would know what we're doing better, the public.
I, I didn't know I was gonna chair this meeting, the mayor called me to tell me he was not gonna be here, so.
What's that?
The mayor sort of caught me off guard, he didn't tell me he was gonna be here today, tonight, so.
Well, you know what bothers me in regards to this whole thing? We have officers of the city, by ordinance, by ordinance. All of a sudden, we don't fill the building commissioner his job. Not filled, Dave Marion becomes a new title. It's the mayor's and maybe corporation council's way of averting our ordinance. No building commissioner, that's an officer of the city. Then we go to the collector's office. Now we have a lady in finance that takes over that job, does that make her an officer of the city? Because she's now in charge of the collector's office. That is supposed to be an officer of the city. We have Haggerty's job, I believe you're an officer of the city, are you not, Mr. Haggerty? Thank you. We have the chief of police, officer of the city. Fire chief, officer of the city. Why do we have those? Why do we have those? We have those in case we get a mayor someday that goes off half-cocked and wants to fire everybody. The council can say, oh, no. They're officers of the city. They continue to serve until you appoint somebody else, and the council approves. It's a check and a balance in government, which you need to have. It's important, and unstable times, it's important. But we're going around the rules somehow. No longer have a collector, maybe your corporation council can help me on that one. No longer have a building commissioner job filled, officer of the city. You know, we need to start looking at somebody's, why are we changing the titles? I have a sneaky suspicion why. We don't want those jobs, collector to be an officer of the city. We don't, we want the building department to be a collector, an officer of the city. We want it completely controlled. I think we all better start doing our homework. We better start thinking.
Chairman. Point well taken, thank you, Alderman Tempest, with the.
No, I, I wanna make a comment. Alderman Tempest, I raised that same question in the labor relations meeting, can I ask Alderman Rivera? That is a check and balance in government, I said, we don't, I said, can we? I asked the mayor, and I don't know if he, he talked to corporation council, but can we take the job duties of an officer of the city and create another title, which is what we've done a little bit here, and then just strip the officer of the city and not, and not, and leave it vacant? I asked if, if we can do that, and we didn't have an answer. Do we wanna, I don't wanna, Dave Marion's been, I think we've all agreed, Dave Marion's been doing a wonderful job in his current position, but I, I think, I would like the corporation council to make sure that we can do this and make sure, because I agree with Alderman Tempest, it's a check and a balance. There's officers of the city, police chief, fire chief, director of public works, director of CDBG, collector, building commissioner, and didn't finance director it used to be, or no?
You know, I, I don't believe so.
But we had, but.
Probably should be for her own protection, but she don't wanna be, so I got back to the mayor real quick.
But, I, I, those are questions that I have, corporation council, can you answer those?
First of all, let me say, none of these salary or budget items came through my office. I have not had any chance to look at these ordinances. I have no idea of what they say. We were not in that loop. If you're asking me for a legal opinion, Alderman, I'll give you a legal opinion on any subject that you ask me to give you one on. So, all you gotta do is ask me, you know, Newton, what's?
Can we?
Yes or no on this question, and I'll do my best to answer it, but you'll probably have to, you know, piggyback to next meeting, because I'm gonna give you.
Aren't we sort of circumventing our own ordinance by not filling positions of officers of the city?
Yes, we are.
Can I?
You're the chairman, you can talk and.
Play the devil, devil's advocate here? The young lady out there that raised the city manager question? Now, if we get a city manager, you'd think that he would come on and, or she, perhaps? They wanna hire their own people, and would they have to, with approval of the council? Let's say the council wants to impose their choices on a city manager, where's the, the efficiencies in that? You know, I don't have any friends, and I don't, I don't care personally who gets hired in the city or who gets fired, but on Bob's behalf, and I've only been here for a little over a month now, my perception of Bob Sabanjan is he's an honest man, and I think he's made some good choices in, in, in people he's appointed to work for the city, and I, and I, I think so far so good, but I understand what you're saying. But on the other hand, like, once again, if we have a city manager, we're gonna micromanage a city manager, and we're gonna have big problems again? I don't know, enough said there. Alderman Cunningham?
Well, no, I think, no, you, you unfinished. I was gonna talk about the next one. Oh, um, you know, just to, not to belabor this subject, but, you know, when, I, I don't think anyone's intentions, and I agree with you, I don't think the mayor or anybody else's intentions was to say they wanna circumvent or to, to, from an honesty standpoint, but I, I share Alderman Tempest's concerns. If those positions are moved to another direction or another process of the city, then what the position held should move with it. If a collector was a, was the
City officer.
City officer, then whomever assumes those responsibility must understand, then now you become a city officer. That's just, it is, and, and to your point, Mr. Chairman, the city manager works at the approval of the council.
Serves at the pleasure of the council?
No, works with the approval of the council. That is the form of government that it is, similar to the mayor, council, the city manager works, and I, I looked that up today. Just so, yeah, but fact is, if those positions were an officer of the city, then whoever, whatever process that the mayor has, they must understand that that process then follows it. And being a manager, I'm sorry, being an officer of the city, is critical. It is critical for the checks and balances, as Alderman Moisio said. And that's just, that's just the way it is, it's, it could be politics, hopefully, it's not. But fact is, that person, whomever holds the responsibility, needs to understand that they work at the behest of the city of Waukegan. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, if I can, I'd like to bring up a motion, if we can go into executive session to discuss this matter. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session, if I can.
We'll have to specify the grounds, it's a personnel issue, Alderman.
Personnel issue, exactly.
Which man?
Exactly.
Can we delay that?
We're gonna need an executive at the end anyway, for some collateral matters, if you can wait or not, I don't know.
Well, can we?
Can we?
Can we put this line, this line, no, I don't wanna hold it over. Can we put this line item down, when we go into executive session? Can we include it in that?
Can we do G and H?
You said we're going into executive session anyways?
Can we take G and H?
Alderman, you can simply make a motion to take things out of order, and
Take things, a motion to take it out of order.
Approve that, and then it's moved on the agenda to the place you wish it to be.
Okay, very well, then I, I'd like to make a motion to take it out of order, and then.
And put it, right after the executive session, Alderman.
Put it right after the executive session, correct.
I'll second it.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by?
Alderman Valco.
Alderman Valco.
That's G and H.
To move item G and H?
To.
That's correct.
To the end of the meeting for.
After executive session, correct.
Yes.
Let's take, let's take a roll call.
Would the clerk please call?
I got it. Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Public Works Committee?
That's also me, today, we met today at, uh, six fifteen, for, for one item only. We have just a lot of discussion, and there's only one thing, and that is motion to recommend that the city council authorize the proper city officials' permission to award proposal for custodial services to Pat Mar Janitorial Services of Lake and the Hill, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed seventy-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty dollars, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moisio. I second it.
Seconded by Alderman May.
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Cunningham.
I know that's, this is on the item to, for an annual contract. I totally disagree with that annual contract. I know we, I'm hoping that we're still gonna be in negotiations with, with the unions to where they can ratify theirs with an agreement, but I don't like the direction this is going. I, it's just, that's just my personal opinion, but I, I, I want to amend the motion that we do need, we do need people cleaning or having a janitorial service for the two buildings, no question about that. But I like to, to amend that where it be on a month-to-month basis until either we ratify or not have a contract at all. But I think it sends the wrong signal for us to put in a contract for, for a year. That means that union, you don't have to negotiate all to bring those people who've been a part of our organization over the last ten to fifteen years collectively. You don't have to sit down and talk to them at all. Once we say yes to this, we have someone who can do their job.
Alderman Cunningham?
And that's, and that's just where I'm at right now. I, I am, I'm not a fan, never have been, and never will be, of people losing their positions. I don't think we need to have a contract in place. I think we need to have services in place in order to provide the services for the two buildings. That's my personal opinion, and, and to you show me one company who will not jump in and provide that for a set of dollar amount, undetermined, undetermined time, you don't need a contract, you need a service, and if they can't do it, somebody else will.
I think they chose their own destiny here, they, they made their decision themselves.
No, look, well, we can say what we wanna say, it was a close vote, twenty-one to eighteen. What if they had a vote tomorrow, more, more people will come. I've seen many times people take votes.
We're not here to do their bidding for them.
I'm not, I'm not saying we're here to do their bidding, I'm here to protect jobs.
They made a choice.
I'm here to protect jobs, period. Them are Waukegan people coming here losing their jobs. Don't nobody speak up for these guys.
Unfortunately, the union isn't speaking up for them either, right?
Well, I'm not the union, I'm an Alderman.
That's right, and we need to, your contract, we're moving on here.
Excuse me?
Point of order, if you could repeat your motion very.
My motion is to eliminate, is to eliminate the, the, the one-year item and put it on a month-to-month or as you need it. It's a service they're providing.
Concise motion, please.
Concise. I move that we approve the janitorial contract not to exceed eighty thousand without a contract.
Would they?
They have to have a contract.
No, you don't have to have a contract.
Month-to-month stipulation or?
Month-to-month stipulation, you have eighty thousand dollars. They have an eighty thousand dollar budget to come in and provide a service to us. What if, what if tomorrow, they ratify our contract, they have another vote? Then what are we gonna, we're stuck for a contract for, for a whole year. We don't need a whole year contract. We need a service to be provided in this two buildings until it has, a resolution has come through.
We could, like, we should go.
I don't know, I, that's up, that's up to staff to find out. I don't think we need a, we don't need a time set on this. There, we only need them to fit, to be backfillers until we, until we get those folks back to work, or we don't.
I represent the taxpayers of the fourth ward.
And so do I.
These people can't make up their mind, you know what? This ship's sailing on.
Then vote your conscience.
In my opinion.
Then vote your conscience, Alderman.
I certainly will.
If I may comment on it, Mr. Mayor. Number one, request permission to award proposal for I'm looking in my mailbox today, I have nothing in front of me that shows a. I have nothing in front of me that shows a proposal, but yet, you're supposed to vote on it, Alderman. Did you see the proposal, Alderman? Did you see it?
Nope.
Then, then how are you gonna vote on it? I'd like to hold it over till we get a copy of the proposal.
But in the meantime, we still need that service, so, uh, I think, I think the department head should be directed to contact somebody to come in and start providing those services as we need it.
Well, you gotta know.
That should be a staff recommendation.
You gotta know.
Well, where's it in our folder for tonight?
Mr. Mayor Proton?
I've got nothing but time on my hands, maybe I can fulfill that role until we can make up our mind here.
Mayor Proton?
Point of order.
Tempest has held this over, once he holds it over, that's it, there's no vote out.
He's held it over, okay.
Is that all right with you?
Yeah.
All right? In the meantime, if it needs to get done, I don't mind weekly service, I really don't.
Well, I was gonna make a comment, if I could, Mayor Proton.
Does the Finance Director have anything to add to this? I'd appreciate your input.
Mayor Proton? Hello, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Alderman Rivera?
Are we breaking any, uh, laws, union laws? I know, you know, with your employees, your, uh, City Hall. For the time being, we can't, you're talking, how many, uh, people do you need to clean during the week? Two? Couple? How many employees would you need to clean during the week? To address that issue right now? You can't place a couple of guys? Yes, I, Chief Cray, Al, could you explain why too as well? Hold on, please.
Yeah. Well, I'm not gonna clean the jail, but I'll talk about that. Under, under state procurement law and our purchasing ordinance and our policies, because this is a service that we've identified as one that is subject to the bid process, and we know that the value of which will be over twenty thousand dollars for the fiscal year, staff cannot simply award contracts on their own, month by month, that would be stringing, and that's not legal. Therefore, it requires city council authorization for us to award the contract. We have issued an emergency P.O.
Thank you.
For the jail, under the public welfare and safety provisions, because there are additional rules and regulations regarding the jail facilities. So we did issue a ninety-day, what was it, eighty-five hundred dollars? Around, um, emergency P.O., so that this particular company that had the best proposal can begin cleaning the jail. But staff is not empowered to award monthly contracts that, staffs would be doing that all the time everywhere and avoiding legislative approval of contracts agreements that would be more appropriately following the procurement process.
Thank you.
Alderman Newsom?
Well, can we do a ninety-day P.O. for this building as well?
Um, I don't believe that that would fall under, if, if the city council authorized that, yes. That's a pretty hard case to make from an auditor's perspective or state statutory perspective, that that would rise to the level of a public safety issue, but the jail absolutely, 'cause there's additional regulations that govern that specifically.
Okay.
Chairman? Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And Alderman Tempest has held it over.
Well, I could withdraw that.
The other problem we have is we have no, we have no service. We're not getting the place cleaned. You're gonna have a problem with another union. And that's okay. Cha-ching, cha-ching lawyers, cha-ching, cha-ching. You're gonna have another problem with another, another union. So just keep that in mind.
Point will take him.
If I may ask Alderman Moiseo, what would your solution be to the problem, sir?
I, there's not a good one. We, we, I think, we tried in budgetary meetings and discussions, we said, you know, we wanted to try to save this, save these janitors, it was thought as a service. We tried. We, in the Labor Relations Committee meeting, we approved the concession agreement with the union. We approved it. Their membership voted it down. Their membership voted it down. I don't, I don't know what else we can do. I don't have a solution. I think we've had, we've talked up here, we've had a lot, I don't have a solution. All I know is we gotta get the place clean any way we can. Mr. Hagerty has worked probably far more on this than he's, he has had to for this, this service, you know, and Mr. Kennedy is racking his brain over here trying to keep it clean, but if we don't get something in there and get it clean soon, we're gonna have grievances from another union.
Alderman Conkin?
Just wondering, can we award this contract by the year, pay it month-to-month with the right to cancel at any time?
Absolutely.
Then we got no problem.
That's not what they said, though.
I would draw my hold over.
You can make that amendment.
I would draw my hold over.
So we can do that?
I, I'm not sure what the, what their proposal was, but the city council can make, can amend it to award the contract to not exceed a certain dollar amount and not to extend beyond April thirtieth and add the provision that if there's a change in the status-
There it is.
With the Ask Me Agreement, that there's a thirty-day cancellation. I'm not sure that was in the proposal, and we'd have to go back to the vendor and make sure they're willing to agree to that. But that would be appropriate legislatively, I believe.
Beautiful. That sounds good.
We were trying to, in the meeting, we were trying to find a balance on something like that. We, we were all very concerned about this, about how to do it. And we're stuck again, and it might seem like we've been stuck for four months here, always between a rock and a hard place on how we do something. But if, if we can do that, then maybe that's the best way to find the balance, is, is do what Ms. McGowsky just told us to do and go that way.
Yes.
So, make the motion, Greg, I'll second.
I'll make the motion to-
Hold on, there's a motion on the floor.
We'll take it to-
No, no.
He's withdrawing his motion.
Coach, withdrawn, Alderman?
Yes.
All right, then, we'll make a motion-
Beautiful.
Motion to amend?
Amend, well, right now, because the motion we have is for the contract. So we're gonna have to, am I right, corporate, we have to amend this contract, or at least the proposal?
Motion to amend.
Correct?
Motion to amend.
As stated by Finance Director.
They're asking to see Andrew into a contractual arrangement, right?
Yes.
That's in, that's in your hand.
Yes, yes.
If you don't wanna sign that contract, but you want to alter before you sign it, then you must make a motion to amend.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what we're gonna do.
I'll make a motion to amend the contract. Tina, you're gonna have to help me with the verbiage here.
Not to exceed eighty thousand.
Not to exceed April-
Eighty thousand.
No, the, the contract number was-
She said-
Seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty. Not to exceed seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars.
And not to extend further than April twenty-twelve with the concessions in there to-
In the event there's a change in the status-
To-
Of the custodial concessions with Ask Me, there's a thirty-day cancellation clause.
Thirty-day cancellation clause.
Can you read that?
Pardon me, was this put out for bid?
Yes.
Proposal, not bid.
Under, under the specs in your hand?
Not mine, Alderman, Mr. Hagerty has the specs, yes, it was.
Oh, proposal, not bid, okay.
RFP, not bid.
Before we leave, can we get that motion written, and then can we vote on it? Because I think there's some confusion on what the exact motion is. I think we know what we want, but can we have somebody write the motion for us?
We gotta write it down appropriately.
Mr. Finn, can you write that for us?
Just another one, you wanna put towards the end here?
He's, uh-
No, we're not putting it there.
You're, you're asking to, to, you're moving to amend the award, the, the motion to award the proposal for this.
To the company.
As, you're asked to amend the terms of that arrangement.
Correct.
To reflect-
A clause to get out, uh, should we negotiate-
A change, a change in, uh, the Ask Me Agreement.
We have, we have thirty-day cancellation.
Yeah, you need the thirty-day-
I think really what you need, if time is not at the essence-
It is.
It is, because you should obviously have corporate scouts drafting the contract and do it the right way.
Because here's the problem.
You amend the written contract, you're a normal-
We, Mr. Hagerty said, if we don't get this done, kind of about a week, and then, then you're gonna bleed into next week, and then you're gonna bleed into next week, and you're gonna have problems with that other union. It's gonna happen, it's coming down the pike.
Why don't we then, uh, go ahead with the motion as agreed and then condition? Okay, so you request permission to award for custodial services, uh, with the changes of-
The, a change in the Ask Me Agreement.
Just with the changes? Are you saying if Ask Me Agreement, because do we consider this?
Yes. That's what, that's what the Alderman has said.
No, thank you.
Yeah, he said that, if the Ask Me Agreement changes, it changes, that's what you guys have said.
I have, I have a question. We can amend this ordinance if they've already did a ninety-day P.O. to have, that's the most stressing right now is the jail, correct? So we would have-
Here, I have a, I have a, I have it here. Chairman?
I mean, the whole, I mean-
Yeah, 'cause you're asking people to do, do their work.
So do we have a week?
No.
Uh, yeah.
No.
We don't have a week?
Here, I, I-
Come here, I just, my problem, Alderman, is that I'm being asked to give, um, legal opinions or to make legal alterations of a document I haven't seen.
I got, let me-
This did not come through my office at any time, so I'm completely operating in the dark here. I'm happy to try to guide you through it.
Let me read this, let me read this. All right, let me read, let me try this. Chairman, please. Motion to recommend that the city council authorize the proper city officials' permission to award proposal for custodial services to Pantar Janitorial Services at the Lake in the Hills, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty, and a duration not to exceed April thirtieth, two thousand and twelve. However, if there is a change in the status of the Ask Me Concessionary Agreement, it might be canceled within thirty days notice. Maybe canceled, maybe canceled within thirty days notice.
Now, so you're moving to amend the current motion in that manner?
To what I just read.
So we first have to vote on the amendment and then vote on the substance.
Second.
Yes.
Somebody else say that, I don't know what you guys are talking about here.
I just read it.
Making a motion to amend the-
I just read it.
We have got second.
Alderman Tempest second.
There was a second there.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman Tempest?
To amend the order.
To amend?
I got a question. I have a question. So this is saying that we are now going to award the seventy-eight thousand dollars to the contract to these people in twelve monthly installments that can be canceled should we so choose, and that would be if the other janitors came on board.
If, if an Ask Me-
If an Ask Me deal is reached.
Correct.
That allows those janitors to return to work.
Correct. Correct.
And that's, of course, assuming that the other side will agree to that.
Right.
It's the contract.
Yeah, there's no other question, can we do that? Can we? We'll find out, okay? We've got it.
All right. I have the motion, Alderman Tempest has the second.
Call for the question.
Call for the question.
Call for the question.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
No.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest. Alderman May?
No.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Okay, that passed.
That's the amendment.
Now we need to entertain a motion to pass the amended, uh, motion.
Yes.
Motion by?
Motion by?
Aye.
So moved.
Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman Conkin?
Pass the motion as amended.
To pass the motion as amended.
Okay. Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye, thank you, Mr. Hagerty.
Alderman Beedling.
No.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
I vote aye, but I'm very, very disciplined in the union membership. I'm not so sure they all were notified of the vote. I don't know if they were sent Red's letter that there wouldn't be a vote. It seemed the vote was very, very close, and it bothered me quite a bit.
Alderman May?
No.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay.
That's it for Public Works.
Old business. Motion to approve the appropriation ordinance for the city of Waukegan, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand and eleven, and ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twelve, as amended. Motion by Alderman Newsom?
Second by who?
That's a salary ordinance.
This is the appropriation ordinance.
Appropriations.
Motion by Alderman Newsom?
If I, if I might just, point of information, we have through this month to pass the new appropriations ordinance. So we have the, one more council meeting this month, we have through June to pass this, but it does have to be, some form of appropriation ordinance has to be passed this month.
Is that July?
No, 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 you're wrong, Counselor. The state statute says that appropriation orders must be passed by the last meeting in July.
July, pardon, misspoke, July.
I know you did, that's why I corrected you.
First quarter of fiscal year.
Uh, you know, being the mayor's not here, he may wanna be some comment. I know that the original appropriation of orders came from the mayor's office, and you've had enormous meetings with the, I don't like two-on-one or three-on-one. I like the whole city council to sit down and discuss and talk, but true-
Committee of the whole?
No, appropriation, you get down there, you start going through it. That's how you did in the old days, you went through each line, and everybody understood what every dollar was being spent. You, you do that as, no, regular council meeting we did, a regular council meeting, I said. I know committee, all together, but a regular council meeting we did, that's the old days, okay? But we didn't have committees back then. Okay, we went each line item, very important, very informative. I know Tina did her best, Joan did her best going through things. Uh, we found some discrepancies as far as what the mayor thought he should have and what she wanted us to pass right away, but you know, nine heads are better than one or two, and you get everybody putting some input in, I think it's better. I really do. And we've done it individually, but I think the ma, what you've got here is some, uh, they haven't filled some positions, uh, they've cut down on the legal services quite a bit. Uh, they've cut some other things out and removed money from, over to the dog pond to keep an animal shelter going, one going, one extra one going over there from the cuts. There are some cuts that are cut too deep. And with the wisdom of the council, the wisdom of the council, nine guys here, they get all the feedback all the time, and with all the experience we have on the, on the floor to help. So I really think the mayor should be here when we vote for this. I really don't think it needs to be voted on tonight. I'd like to hear some of his comments in regards to this, as, as it's passed or defeated. It won't be defeated, it may be amended some places, but I don't know where now. At this point, I think Tina and the girls, uh, got a real hard job trying to get everything in order. They spend hours on it.
You're saying you want to hold it over, Alderman Tempest?
Well-
It has to be tabled.
Just defer, I'd, I'd like to vote to defer it to the mayor. Refer it to the next meeting, eh?
You're saying you want to hold it over?
It's an amended ordinance, so I believe you can hold it over, Alderman, just with the, on your own prerogative.
Okay.
Chairman?
With that, with vice of the corporation counsel being amended, and it's before us this evening, I'd like to hold it over so I ask each of you to go through it very carefully and make sure that's what you have. But thank you for the information laid out so well, Joan and Tina, thank you.
Alderman Moiseo?
I want people to understand, and I get this from Alderman Tempest, the appropriation ordinance is more important than the budget.
Oh, yes.
The budget is just what you hope you spend your money on. The appropriation ordinance is what you legally can spend on. Am I right on that?
Yes. You don't appropriate if you can't spend.
So the appropriation ordinance is the most important thing we do. It's what we... How we legally spend the money. The budget is just what we hope we spend the money on. But the appropriation is what you can legally, by statute, spend the money on. So that's the most important thing we do, the appropriation, not the budget. The appropriation ordinance is the most important. I want to make sure we understand that. The appropriations is the most important, not the budget. Thank you.
Any more?
Next? Held over.
Record shows it's held over under Alderman Tempest's prerogative.
The amended budget.
As amended.
There any reports and communications? Who does that?
There's none.
There's none.
Good. New business, recommended actions by corporation counsel. Item A, approve the payroll dated May 19, 2011, in the amount of $1,275,031.80. Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Conken. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Your vote.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valko.
Aye.
Item B, approve bills dated June 6, 2011, in the amount of $1,683,247.92.
Did somebody review them?
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Conken.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
I vote aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valko.
Aye.
Item C, are there any block parties?
So move.
Just approve as...
Motion to approve block parties.
Motion to approve block parties?
So moved by Alderman Tempest.
I move that block parties be approved as presented.
Second by Rivera.
Second by Alderman Rivera.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Item D, approval of a Waukegan Park District raffle.
So move.
Second.
Newsom?
No, no, no. Cunningham.
Cunningham? Okay.
It's a voice vote.
It's a voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Same thing with the next one.
Item E, grant permission to the Knights of Columbus to hold their Tootsie Roll Drive on September 16, 17, and 18, 2011.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Conken. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Item F, grant permission to Black Chamber of Commerce to plant a community garden in the city of Waukegan on vacant lands.
So move. Second, so move.
Where's that at? On the Tuana Genesee Street or Sheridan?
Canard in the... Canard and Lakeview.
Okay.
Motion by Alderman...
If we could, this came to the Greentown Committee. It's a very exciting proposal. Reverend Gass and his organization has got a very exciting proposal to grow food on our south side. They've got some... The city does own some land that they would like to use. It's by South Street and Canard, I believe it is. We've begun, in response to that request and preliminary plan, we've begun to look at the lots. There are some of it the city owns and some of it we don't think we do own. We've got to ascertain what that is. There's also some question about whether they're going to be raised beds. We're going to have some sort of a clay layer in case we're dealing with some soil issues. We don't know what the soil issue is. So if I might simply advise that we pass this conceptually, that we approve of the concept, and then have the actual plan approved as soon as it can be put together.
Does the Alderman's award have any...
Yeah, that was the intent of it. Because they wanted to start doing some... In order to start doing these things, they needed to have council approval. And I know they've been... There was discussion today, and they've been working diligently as a plan already in place. It's got to go through that process. But we needed to have this done first, conceptually. So I'd appreciate if the Alderman would go ahead.
Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Newsom. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Ayes have it.
You want that on... We got...
Ordinances and resolutions. I read them? Item A, amending the Boca National Building Code, 1996, as previously adopted and amended regarding certificates of occupancy.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Rivera.
Come on, man, let's get this done.
All in favor?
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom. Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valko.
Aye.
Next one?
Item B, resolutions, amendment to Woodland Foods inducement ordinance. Motion by...
It's my board. I'll move on that. So move.
Motion by Alderman Valko.
Alderman May.
May?
Second by Alderman May. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valko.
Aye.
Item C, ordinance amending Chapter 11 of the municipal code for the city of Waukegan regarding excessive noise.
So move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera.
That was voted on once before.
No, we didn't.
Correct?
No.
Yes. It was voted on... There was a...
I was going to say, we already voted on.
There was a problem with the bell.
Oh.
Remember, the church bell was an issue.
Oh.
But we did pass this.
I brought it.
So it was... I forgot. Take... We'll take it off the agenda.
Okay.
We're going to do Alderman's time?
On behalf of the chair, there is some difference of opinion here as to whether we voted actually on the second honorary resolution honoring firefighter Morris Moore. I think we may have, we may not, although there's some differing recollection here. So I think just to make sure, on behalf of the chair, entertain a motion to pass the resolution.
By Alderman Newsom.
Second.
Second by Alderman Cunningham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, motion passes.
Alderman's time.
Alderman's time.
Alderman's time.
Alderman's time.
Make it short.
First up is Alderman Rivera. Thank you. The other day, I checked out the new park district softball fields and soccer fields. I tell you, it's pretty impressive. You know, I love golf, don't get me wrong. I supported golf. I really didn't support this, you know, this move. But... And I know there was a lot of politics involved, you know, but to be honest with you, after seeing what I saw the other day, this probably best serves the community, you know, the entire community. There's no question about it. Congratulations, Wayne, on your... The street that they dedicated to you. I know you worked hard at this.
Thank you.
Tonight, we also honored John Delavelli, who also worked hard on the referendum and getting it passed and getting the word out. When was it, back in '92 or something like that? But it's pretty impressive. And I want to congratulate you and the park district. It's something that the city should go out there and check out, no question about it. And the good thing about it is the rest of the economy around it, it's going to benefit from it. And I know one of the hotels out there already has, which is in your ward, Alderman Valko. So... Yeah, Hawthorne Suites. And so, you know, it's going to benefit, no question about it. So, thank you. That's all I needed to say.
Alderman Cunningham?
Three, three, one, I want to echo the sentiments of the... I want to make sure I'm saying it right, the soccer and softball complex, is that correct, Wayne?
Yes.
What a fantastic, fantastic job that our Waukegan Park District. And I agree with Alderman Rivera. As many complaints I know they received during that time was very tenuous for the park district as a whole by tearing out a golf, I think, a golf institution for a lot of those who remember and playing on, you know, on that golf course. But if you take a look, it truly reflects the entire community. I'm not a softball person, I'm not a soccer person, but I tell you, you can go out there for a great family experience, and I think that was the goal of the park district. So kudos goes out to Wayne and the team over at the Waukegan Park District. Second, we did a fantastic job of honoring some of our fallen heroes of the city of Waukegan. I don't personally know Mr. Morris, but in talking with Alderman Conken, his dad worked with him, sounds like an honorable man, obviously, during those particular times, to be the first African-American, to shoulder so many different things going on at that time. I know it was not only difficult, but it sounds like he did it with honor, dignity, and respect. So that goes out knowing to him and his family. I, too, would like to send something to the public safety committee of a hero that I know, Mr. Lucius Copeland. I'd like to move that we send a honorary street sign for Mr. Copeland, move that to the public safety committee to talk about, and I would like to be there personally to speak on that behalf. If you don't know Mr. Copeland, you should know him. He's just a man of dignity, respect, and he is a guy who has never, ever, and in my personal opinion, or in my times of knowing him, ever raised his voice, ever used profanity. He's just one of you would call a nice man, him and his wife. So I'll put that in committee, and hopefully it comes out. Last but not least, you know, going to the ribbon cutting of the sports complex, they open that whole ceremony up with a prayer. I go to other municipalities, they open up with a prayer. I look at baseball, softball, football games, they open up with a prayer. I don't know about many of you, but I think most of you are. Can we say some of the hard times that consisted in the city of Waukegan? Could they have started when we took prayer out of city council? As a biblical man, I'm going to say yes, but I think realistically speaking, that was a sign of times. But I do remember this. I remember this council said nine to zero to bring prayer back to this council. And I've been here for the last two years. And I'm yet to see the council, nine to zero. I'm yet to see that come back. I don't know if it was intentional, which I don't think so, but I do know this. If we ever need prayer, we need it now. We have some difficult times in this city. We're laying off people. We're laying off hard-working people, and by no fault of no one's, did nothing wrong. I'm telling you, I'm expecting, not I'm asking, but I'm expecting for the next council meeting that we start this thing off with a prayer. Not a moan of silence, but with some words of encouragement so we can all understand that we must start our day, every day, with a prayer. Thank you.
Alderman Conken?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to send my congratulations and make mention of the Memorial Day Parade. The weather was fantastic that day, and we had a better turnout than usual. We had a nice crowd at the park whereby where the old American Legion was. So my congratulations to the American Legion and the David Motley for putting on the parade. I'd like to see it get a little bit bigger in future years. I hope it does. But all in all, I think it was a good event, and I'm glad everybody came out and just remembered Memorial Day. Remember that Memorial Day was a day for us to remember our fallen war dead, not necessarily our veterans, although they knew them better than anybody. Veterans Day will be in November, and we'll be doing it again. The other thing I'd like to mention is, mentioned a little bit earlier, the beaches there, it is getting hotter, and there are going to be more people down at the beaches, and we do not have lifeguards. So I just want to make sure that everybody's clear that you're in a situation where you swim at your own risk. Please be careful out there, and everybody enjoy the beach and be safe. Thank you.
Alderman Moiseo?
I just wanted to echo the comments about John Delavelli. I probably should have done it when his family was here, but there's... He's the reason I'm sitting here. When I first ran as an Alderman, he really helped campaign for me. I got sort of thrown in the mix with a month to go, and John made a lot of phone calls for me to help me get elected my first term. One thing about John Delavelli is he was Waukegan. He believed in Waukegan when he was school board president. One thing he didn't ever want Waukegan teams doing was embarrassing Waukegan. He wanted you to win, but you better not embarrass Waukegan. He took great pride in Waukegan. He believed in Waukegan, he loved Waukegan. We need to get that back. We need to get that John Delavelli attitude back, that tough as nails and that we believe in Waukegan when I couldn't embarrass Waukegan. We need that back. Thank you.
Alderman Beedling?
Chief, do you know offhand how many loud music tickets we've written over the last couple few weeks? It's terrible in my neighborhood, it's terrible all over this city. Yep. Quality of life is slipping by no fault of your own, but I would like to see a quota on those tickets. You can't say that?
I will say, if anybody has any specific problems in their wards, give me a call, and we'll increase the patrol in that area. We can do special details. We can assign officers to be in a particular area to run a loud music or loud noise detail. we can assign officers to be in a particular area to run a loud music or loud noise detail, that's fine, we can do that.
Forgive me, I grew up in the 60s, and we had different standards back then, and life seemed to be a lot better.
No argument, no argument.
And I hope the 4th of July fireworks will be dealt with the best that we can, because it's like a civil war in my neighborhood, almost every 4th of July, thank you.
Okay, Alderman Newsom.
Thank you, first of all, I'd like to say congratulations to John Delavelli and his family, and firefighter Moore for their service to Walk Keegan, and also Wayne Motley for his service to the Park District, and having a street named after himself. And I'd also like to echo Alderman Cunningham regarding the prayer. I do remember when this council voted nine to zero to have prayer reinstituted in this council, and it has not, to this day, been carried forward. I too have been at different events where people say they don't want a mixed religion and politics or whatever, but we are who we are, and we know that prayer is important to everybody, especially to me. I mean, if you don't put him first, what can you expect, whatever you get? So I too would like to see prayer reinstituted, and the last issue I have is regarding the alternate parking, the time change for that alternate parking, I have yet to see it in judiciary or public safety, so I'd like to see it as just changing the time from 6:30, I mean, from 7:30 PM, I mean, AM, to wherever, 6 o'clock, or whatever it was, according to the off-street parking, I mean, the ordinance regarding the parking on the street. The alternate parking right now time is 7:30 AM, and I think it should mirror, it should mirror the other time. Right, and I mean, it's when they're dropping off their kids at a daycare, or just come and you move your car to the street, and, I mean, you can't park on the street between 2 AM and 6:30 AM, but the alternate parking says from 12:08, 12:01 to 7:30, or something like that, I think those times should mirror. Go ahead.
We found out what the issue was, and this has been about four years, we've had the same ordinance for a long time. What has changed though, was this 12-hour shift, we have officers coming on at 6 AM. So before, they didn't know, so if somebody comes on at 6, he's driving through the neighborhoods, he sees a car there, he thought that car may have been there all night, so that's where this is coming, so we're making that adjustment. That's just an anomaly with that 12-hour shift, based on the hours of when it's put into play. So the ordinance was okay at the time, but now with the shift, with the different officers, we have to address that.
Okay.
But it should be balanced, I agree, just to make it simple for everybody to understand.
Right, okay, that's all.
Can I just ask one question? You know, everybody kind of jumped when I said quotas here, however, we seem to have hiring quotas, how is that different than ticket quotas? I don't, I'm not getting it, I just don't understand. I thought we were a free and open society.
You had your own.
Thank you.
Corporation Counsel, what is our position on that from a legal standpoint, so we're all clear?
What is that?
We, these are union negotiation matters, we probably shouldn't be talking about them unless we're ready to adopt.
Ticket quotas, what I'm talking about.
Quotas are.
I wanted to make you sure that the corporation counsel.
Quotas are up.
Hey, when I was a policeman, you can write as many tickets as you wanted. You can write as many tickets as you wanted.
That's why you're Park Commissioner.
That's right.
Okay.
Alderman Tempest.
Thank you, number of things, I guess I'll start where we just left off. Because I talk to the traffic commander sometimes, it seems every alderman has had recently a problem with tickets on the shift, as you explained what happened. I thought this was gonna come from a recommendation from your traffic department, which I spoke to over six weeks ago. I guess I'm gonna make a motion, so it gets in the minutes tonight, so we can act on it, and the police and fire committee can take care of it, and my motion would be to, and you don't need lawyer fees, you, hell, just cross it off with the time. Excuse me, but I would, my motion would be to make the odd even parking, that's odd even parking, we know how that goes, and the city stickers, you get a ticket for that too, or if your car isn't registered in Walk Keegan, and we need those all to be the same, and my recommendation would be from 12:01, or from 2 to 6, 2 to 6 PM, if you're on the wrong side of the street, or for all the tickets to, the time to be the same. We need to get that clarified, and we need to get a recommendation. From, they're not, no, they're not the same right now, they're not the same, I know that.
You can't park on the street overnight with you, not as Walk Keegan resident, from 2 AM to 6 AM. Alternate parking is from 12:01 to 7:30 AM, and they should both cut off at the same time.
So our motion is to.
Make them equal.
What committee you want that in, sir?
Public Safety.
Public Safety, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, did you get that?
Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by who?
That's her, she can do it.
Alderman Tempest.
Newsom can do it, she's fine.
Alderman, you sure you don't want that in judiciary, since it's an ordinance? Okay. We'll throw it in judiciary.
Well, then, get it in judiciary, get it on the agenda, just cross it, get the ordinance, show me how, cross them off, and do the legal work for you, for your charge, just a little, cross a little name in there, that's all, the time. Okay, that's one. Garden, well, I've been picking on Finn's tonight, but I guess I'd give him a good compliment here. I was at his garden, by the First National Bank, I count, what a nice job they did on Madwood Fuke's garden, in the Walk, it looked terrible before, I gotta tell you how bad it looked, and the hours, I mean, you still need more volunteers. But what you did on the right side, you come in, it is gorgeous, it is gorgeous, in that part of it, just that part, we got a little ways to go yet, but you need more help, you can't do it with the help you're getting. You've gotta get some volunteers down there, and Amy, she's gotta get some work pants on, and get her working a little harder, or whatever, I'll have to come help you too, because that, that, and then, the idea of the Alderman Cunningham and the gardens on the south side, you know, way back in the old days, yeah, the old days, I'm thinking, looking at you, it's the old days, Finn's from now, in the old days, we used to have the Co-op Dairy, on McAllister Street, 600 McAllister, and the horse barn was in the back, that's where Walker has his automobile shop now, that was a horse barn, Alderman, if you didn't know that.
I didn't.
When the pony came around, he dropped his stuff in the street, it didn't stay there. All the people in the street ran out and grabbed it, and we worked that in our garden, and in the compost pile, couldn't put it in your garden where you have to save it over the side, or it would burn your garden too quick, but every, most lot of people had gardens, especially the poor folks, we all had gardens in the backyard. And you know, it's a great relaxing, I spent the last two days in my garden, my potatoes are this high, my tomatoes are this high, I got some horse poop out, good rotted stuff, put it in water, now I made tea out of that, not drinking tea, the tea to water your garden with, it really gets those tomatoes going good, and, you know, it's really relaxing, and you can produce food, and it's a great time to get going, and flowers too. If more people would do that with their family, show them, plant in a seed, what it can do, and explain to them how that all occurs. I think we need to do that, and your place on Belvedere, not a, I still voted no on that, I don't know, that soil is not conducive, it's expensive to haul that dirt in there, a little flower bed would have been a better idea, and a better idea, the concept is wonderful, but you've gotta get up, well, they got good soil, where the power lines are, and some gardens up that way, where people can have plots and so forth, it just, you got your hands full there. Okay, prayer, you know, I guess the council is gonna have to overrule, I think the time has come, 9-0, I don't care what the law says, we all decide, we'll take turns as aldermen, we'll move the alderman time up, and have prayer then, and we'll take turns if we all 9-0 saying the prayer. We don't need a city chaplain, we have to draft Finn, he used to be a minister, or was it one time, he's both. So, but I don't care what the law is, it's about time this country went back to prayer, we always did it, you know, stand up for what you believe. I'm not gonna do what the county does, to heck with them, because I came from the county environment, I'm not gonna follow their rules, this is the city council, we make the rules. You wanna veto it, fine, 9-0, guess what, it's prayer time. Make up your mind, Alderman, make up your mind. Okay, the next thing, oh yeah, this is something we really need to look at. And I said this before, Alderman, when we get a union, we pay these fancy lawyers $400 an hour to negotiate, we give some other people extra stipends to help negotiate, and then they ask us to vote in an ordinance, and you don't read it, you don't read it, like we're God, we'll tell you guys what to do. Well, let me tell you what's bad about one of them, it happened to a gentleman, average worker, ball fire, no, bad, bad, no, put 20 years in, work, we need somebody to manage something. So, yeah, I'll help out, went into management for maybe two, three months.
Yeah.
Didn't make it, hell, I could have told you that before you put him there, but he wanted to help out. Now, because he went to management, guess what? Guess what? You don't have any seniority, you worked your 20 years, but you're in the bottom of the poll. Layoffs come, bye, that is morally wrong, morally wrong. He gave you 20 years, he went to help out, nobody explained this to him, and then you throw him under the table. You throw him under the table, that is morally wrong, that needs to be justified and looked into, and there's a way to do it. Okay, I have to speak up on that. I gotta write things down, okay. Oh, John Delavelli, my dear friend, I really wasn't prepared for him to be here tonight, I would have done a much better job with Mrs. Delavelli. What a wonderful friend, I remember him when he's on the school board, a little story if I don't mind telling you, he's the president, I was chairman of the police committee after the police strike, after the police strike, and she, you talk about a headache, you talk about problems, wow, we lost the whole police department, starting over. It was a terrible, terrible dismay, anyway, we worked through it, finally got, and then John, I'm John's boss at the time, kinda, you know, you're chairman, you have to kind of sit down and kind of smooth things over with him, make sure things are going good, then he becomes elected to the school board. Boy, you some choice words on him, he said, now you son of, and I'll let you guys fill that in, I'm your boss, now I'm president of the school board, ha ha. So with that, I say, you know, always treat somebody, you never know when they might be your boss, always treat them with kindness and respect, because you never know what's gonna come around, it always comes around, especially when you hang around for a long, long, many years. Fireworks, Alderman, boy, you're so right. 4th of July, it's, you don't know if there shoots or what, they got rockets going up in the air, landing on house, and I, I listen to the police radio, they can't keep up, but you know what you gotta do? You don't catch every speeder going down the street, do you? But don't tell me you can't find anybody that's violating the law. We got a low of some arrests taking place, I mean, we just want the, we just want the ordinances to be in effect, not a vacation day. So we need to take a harder look at that, because those rockets landing on your roof, guess what? I could have, my house could catch on fire, I'm sorry. We need to take a better look at that, and I can't see the city going up for grabs, and not one, none arrests me. City stickers, I might be wrong in this, but something's wrong with the way the clerk's office, or the collector's office, two computers, two computers putting in vehicle stickers. Now, tell me what's wrong with this, a line going out the door, now I gotta have a lieutenant there supervising the line, what does that cost me per hour, when I could be doing something else? I gotta have him supervise, I've gotta have him supervise, because this line's so long, two people there. Now, I have no brain trust, but why couldn't you just fill the application out? Give them their vehicle sticker, put it in the computer later. What, let the, when they're mailed in, we get to them, but the last day, sure, people wait till the last day. And we need to do a better job of getting the currency exchanges, letting people know they can buy them there for a small fee. It's a big problem, I know people did not want to be fined, they want their vehicle stickers, it's a problem, chief, and it's not your problem, but I wonder where we're headed with that. With that, again, Alderman Cunningham, I want to thank you for bringing, and Edie, I want to thank you for bringing up the prayer message again. I think the council should take a stand, I really do, in regards to this, I don't care what the federal law is, I don't care. I'm elected to do my job, and nobody's gonna keep my mouth shut, nobody.
Alderman Tempest, I think you should make a motion to have, to have the clerk have a person here at the next council meeting to do the.
I don't need to spend money, I gotta.
I don't think, I don't think you would spend money, I think people want to do it voluntarily.
Well, that's fine, or Edie can do it, you can do it. Playboys can do it, ladies can do it.
Thank you. They'll work it out. Alderman May.
Thank you, you finished?
Yep.
I also wanted to congratulate the Walk Keegan Park District on a phenomenal weekend, the sports park was incredible, Wayne, great job. And Claudia Freeman also should be recognized for the Dandelion Wine Art Festival that took place in Bowen Park this past weekend. Beautiful day, fantastic event. Secondly, I want to talk about the beach, of course, I want to thank Friends of Walk Keegan Beach once again, they were down there in the last month cleaning up, the porta potties have been placed, garbage cans are back on the beaches. I want everyone to remember the message, leave only your footprints, that means if you bring it in, take it back out with you. I also want to thank, oh, I also want to remind everyone that the Walk Keegan Band kicks off down at our beautiful beach, at Steiner Pavilion, on June 14th at 7:30. Want to thank private sponsors for the Walk Keegan Band, AT&amp;T, Midwest Generation, and North State Spink. I also want to thank Tom Hagerty for his work down at the beach in the recent weeks. He's been instrumental in getting our signage corrected, the garbage corrected. But I also want to thank Tom as my employee of the month, I think I talked to Tom more than I talked to my mother this month. So, thank you, Tom, you've been very responsive, and the residents of the 7th Ward have been very pleased with the results. Next item I have, in one of my neighborhoods, there was a, you know, a robbery, a break-in, I've got many calls from that neighborhood, I want to stress the importance of the principles of the neighborhood watch, keep an eye out for your neighbors, if you see suspicious activity, report it. If you see unusual activity in your neighborhood, step out on your front doorstep, and let people know that you're watching, and it's time for us to take ownership of our neighborhoods, our police can't be everywhere all the time, but I think the communities really need to take ownership of their neighborhoods, keep an eye out, report suspicious activity, I just think it's really important, and it'll go a long way in strengthening our neighborhoods. My last comment is to the 7th Ward, I do maintain a Facebook and a website for informational purposes for the people of my ward, I also have an email, which a lot of people have found and are using, it's lisamay7@gmail.com, I do a monthly newsletter, and I'd like to get as many people on that list as possible, and that's all I have, thank you.
Alderman Valco.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, I was disappointed a couple of weeks ago when Park City was awarded the possibility of one of the five new casino licenses. Without going into detail why Walk Keegan was again not included, I would like to make the following motion. The corporation counsel researched to see if Walk Keegan is a home rule city, has the right to make and install a three-member liquor commission instead of the current one liquor commissioner, and for this to be placed in the Judiciary Committee for review.
Second.
Second.
On a brighter note, I too was invited to the grand opening of the Walk Keegan Sports Park. Mr. Clerk, you did a fantastic job, I know you said it took you 20 years to get it. What was not mentioned was the concession area, Melana's concessions, they have two concession spots there, Wayne? By Rick Alamo and his family, please go there, the food is tremendous, and the price is reasonable, that's all I have, sir.
I need a motion to go into.
So move. So move to go in executive session.
Motion to go in executive session on the subjects of employment and personnel pending litigation and real estate negotiations. Motion by Alderman Valco, seconded by Alderman Tempest.
Alderman Rivera. Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin. Alderman Moiseo. Alderman Beedling. Alderman Newsom. Alderman Tempest. Alderman May. Alderman Valco.
Motion to adjourn.
Let's go. What's the motion?
Motion to reconvene.
Who made the motion?
No, we're waiting, Alderman, you wanna make it?
So move.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, second.
We gotta probably take a roll again.
We do.
Take a roll.
You ready?
Yep. Take a roll, Wayne.
Roll call first.
Yeah, roll call first.
I got it, I got it.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin. Alderman Moiseo. Alderman Beedling. Alderman Newsom. Alderman Tempest. Alderman May. Alderman Valco. Present.
I will make, labor relations, I will make that motion. Approve addition of building and co-compliance management positions to salary ordinance schedule. and co-compliance management positions to salary ordinance schedule, and I so move.
Second?
By Cunningham.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Cunningham.
Yep. Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom. Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May. Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Item H, approve addition of director of policy and projects position to salary schedule and delete legislative liaisons stipend in section 11.3 of salary ordinance, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Newsom.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin. Alderman Moiseo. Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom. Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May. Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn. Second. Alderman Feedling.
Aye.